All right, welcome everybody to the St. Louis Park School Board Meeting for August 12th. Happy to have everybody here. The first thing on our agenda is going to be a spotlight for the 2019 IB diploma recipients. I'm just, I speak for the board, but we're all going to speak for ourselves how proud we are of all of you and all the hard work you put in. So I will let Jenny start up.
Thank you. My name is Jenny Magdal and I'm the International Baccalaureate Diploma Program Coordinator here at the high school. In the 2019 session, we had 117 juniors and seniors take a total of 443 examinations. These courses are recognized internationally, which is always an exciting thing, and they're standardized internationally as well. In each course, students complete internal assessments like an oral examination or an independent experimentation, as well as the external assessments like the examinations in May. We're here tonight, though, to recognize these 13 2019 diploma recipients. These students were required to successfully complete three standard level courses. Those range from anywhere from one year in length to two years in length, as well as three higher level courses, each of those being two full years in length. In those courses had to come from the five main core classes like Studies in Language and Literature, Language Acquisition, Individuals and Societies, the Sciences, Mathematics, and the Arts. Five of our recipients chose to take four higher level courses rather than the three required. One of our recipients chose to take an additional IB course that didn't even count towards the diploma, and one of our students earned the bilingual diploma in Spanish. In addition to their required work, their required coursework, the IB diploma recipients also completed core requirements. They included a course called Theory of Knowledge that looks at how we know the things that we know and the areas where knowledge stems from. They each completed an extended essay, which is a 4,000-word essay on some topic of their choice, and they completed a project that incorporated creativity, activity, and service. Through all of these, students earned points. They needed a minimum of 24 points. They could have earned a maximum of 45. This year's diploma recipients earned an average of 30 points, with the highest scorer earning 39 points. They are itching to come up, I'm sure, and introduce themselves and their families where they're going to college and kind of what the IB has done for them. So we'll just, from alphabetical order, Superintendent Ossai, Ms. Gores, if you could come up, please. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Cyrus Abrahamson. My parents are Joel Abrahamson, who is here, and Miriam Gustafson, who currently isn't here. And then my aunt and uncle also came tonight, and I would like to thank my parents a lot for supporting me through the past several years, both in the IB diploma and just getting through high school in general. I will be attending Northwestern University next year and plan to study neuroscience. And one thing the IB taught me was how to study effectively and manage my time.
Got my parents here, Andy and Ann. Big thanks to them. They've been great along the way. Ms. Magdal, shout out. It's been, it's been really helpful to have her through the four years, for sure. I'm going to St. Olaf next year. I'm really excited about that. And IBs taught me how to deal with some tough classes, so I'm prepared for my future.
My name is Yona Davis. My mom Esther is here. My dad couldn't make it. Next year, I'll be taking a gap year abroad in Israel and then continuing my studies at the University of Wisconsin-Madison. And I think I learned how to go with the flow and also manage my time effectively through the IB diploma.
Hi, my name is Sophia Davenport. I'm going to the University of Wisconsin-Madison next year. My parents are Renell Willie, David Davenport, and Beth Davenport, and I'd like to thank them as well as Ms. Magdal. I think that the biggest thing that IB taught me was writing skills in very different ways. What I mean by that is learn how to write for all different types of circumstances. Thank you.
I will be attending the University of Minnesota College of Liberal Arts, and what IB has taught me is how to persevere through challenges that I feel like really could have gotten me down, but I chose not to let them.
Hi, I'm Katie Hardy, and my mom Nancy is here, and I'd like to thank her for supporting me through everything and actually getting me to do this program in the first place because I didn't think that I could, and she gave me the confidence that I could in the first place. I'm going to the University of Wisconsin-Madison in the fall for nursing, and I think the biggest thing that IB taught me was to have confidence in myself and to manage my time and my classes effectively.
My parents Molly and Sarah are here. I'm going to Normandale to study business, and the biggest thing that IB taught me was to manage my time and to really appreciate my love for literature.
My parents Ken and Tony are sitting over there. I want to thank them for supporting me and also dealing with me. I'm going to Marquette University to study physical therapy in the fall, and I think what I learned from IB was like just how to take on, deal with some tough projects.
I'm here tonight with my parents Barry and Steve Orloff and my little brother Noah. He's taking the photos. And I want to take, I want to thank my parents and Ms. Magdal for supporting me through this program and high school in general. And this fall, I will be attending Emory University, where I'll be studying biology. I think through taking such rigorous courses in the IB program, it's prepared me immensely for what's to come, and I look forward to the future.
I'm here with my parents Carolyn and Igor. I'm going to Brown to study history and literature and probably international relations, too. And I'll probably learn to like read effectively and like take notes in the IB diploma.
Hi, my name is Will Steib, and I'm here with my parents Jim and Ellen. I'd like to thank them a lot for helping me on a lot of late nights and stressful nights throughout the years. I'm going to the University of Minnesota next year to study civil engineering, and the one thing I learned from the IB diploma was how to write a good research paper.
My name is Emma Yarger. In the fall, I'm going to be attending Northwestern University to study journalism. Tonight with me is my mom Marcie, and I want to thank her for sticking with me through the ups and downs of this program. And I think one thing I learned was through the extended essay, how to dig deeper into a certain subject and actually write a big paper.
We're going to do a group photo, and anybody here who wants to take the group photo, feel free to move and get yourself where you want to be for that.
We are just so proud of you and for your parents and your support systems and your teachers. We've loved having you, and we are so glad you're looking forward to your future. Go, go have a good one. This is the official call to order, and the first item is approval of the agenda. On the agenda tonight, we have open forum, the superintendent's report, discussion items. The discussion items include the summer curriculum program review, the construction update, gender inclusion policy implementation, the school board, school liaison assignments for the coming school year, and policy development first reading, policy 537, gender inclusion, 410, family and medical leave, and our 413 harassment and violence policy. You then have our consent agenda, followed by our action agenda. On the action agenda, we have setting of the truth and taxation date for December 9, 2019, 6:30, in case you don't stay tuned to the end. We have our employee, an employee agreement, executive assistant to the superintendent and school board. Then we will have communications and transmittals and adjournment. Is there a motion to approve the agenda? Moved by Karen, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ann. All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Carrie, 6-0. Is there anybody here who wants to speak to us on open forum? See, no one. We will move ahead with our agenda on the superintendent's report.
All right. Good evening, Chair Gores, members of the board, this evening for my superintendent's report. I would like to highlight three items, and two of the items will be connected to our leadership advances and data advance last week. Last week, our teaching and learning team convened and facilitated four days of leadership development for cabinet, principals, and teacher leaders from across our system. Three days were designed to really help us advance our work for the coming school year in a collaborative manner. On August 6th, principals and cabinet members engaged in learning regarding the important operational and instructional leadership items, specifically from an operational leadership standpoint. We went deeper around our emergency preparedness practices, spent time really looking at our human resources practices, and our technology management. From an instructional leadership standpoint, leaders reviewed and reflected on student achievement data, and then were asked to critically reflect on the effectiveness of our continuous improvement plans from last school year. What was most exciting to me about that experience is not only did we take a chance to reflect, but we really used those reflections to help us accelerate our work moving into this school year. On the 7th, not only were cabinet and principals together, but we also invited a group of teacher leaders where we really looked at the effectiveness of our collaboration and what it really needs to look like as we move into the school year, this school year, and also the importance of feedback in our work and how we believe that feedback at every level will help accelerate student achievement here in St. Louis Park Public Schools. On the 9th, Tammy Reynolds, our Director of Student Services, convened a group of principals with other teaching and learning team members to go deeper around our Strategy One work of restorative practices and to really allow our principals to start to internalize the different components related to that practice. In addition to the work that we did with our leadership advances, we also convened approximately 85 staff members from across the district on August 8th. And at that meeting, we, we really built up and ramped up to that opportunity the two days prior, which allowed principals to lead the planning process for their continuous improvement plans with their teams. The principals used data and learning to really focus their efforts, and the highlight for me of the third day was student involvement. I've been a part of these type of data retreats for many, many years, and this was the first time that students, at least in my experience, had ever been a part of that. And it was really meaningful and powerful to have them have an opportunity to internalize the data and to then share what they believed as the pathway moving forward. I think one of the most powerful pieces connected to that day was that our students, I would say unanimously, said that this data doesn't represent who we are or what we know and are able to do, and I'm confident that as we continue to move forward in collaboration with our students, families, and community, that we'll be able to really move the needle on some of our most rigorous assessments here in St. Louis Park. Lastly, I just want to congratulate and thank all of the students who started, you know, fall sports. You know, fall sports for me is always an exciting time because it really marks, in many respects, the start of the new school year. We had a couple of hundred students here today on campus practicing different sports, and you know, what's exciting, as I've talked to our athletic director, he shared that the numbers that we had on day one this school year are comparable to maybe even slightly higher than were our highest points of participation last year. And what excites me about that is as we think about a district mission and, you know, the specific component of our mission around providing students multiple pathways to excellence, sports and activities are just other ways for our students to engage and be a part of our wonderful school community here in St. Louis Park. And that concludes my report for this evening.
Esten, rather than ask this question at the very end of the meeting, we may repeat it then. This is our only meeting in August, so I just wondered if you might want to tell our home here is when the first day of school is this year.
So, thank you for that question. The first day of school this year is September 3rd, so it's the day after Labor Day, and I, and I hope I got that right. I'm pretty sure it's September 3rd. And it's the day after Labor Day, and we're excited. We're excited to welcome back our approximately 4,600 students, and we'll be welcoming back all staff on August 27th and looking forward to engaging in a day full of learning with them. And actually, on the 19th, so next Monday, we've changed our practices slightly. In the past, we would convene a new teacher workshop or licensed staff workshop where we would engage new licensed staff and to be more inclusive, recognizing that every single employee in this district contributes to helping our students actualize the mission. We've changed it to an all staff, new staff experience, so we're looking forward to that and really looking to engage our new staff from day one from the standpoint of recognizing the role that they play in helping us accomplish our mission.
Thank you. And our first through 12th grade starts on the 3rd, but are kindergarteners, are they there too later typically?
Yeah, two days later, so on the 5th, Thursday.
Wouldn't want to put those poor kindergarteners into the chaos of the first day of school. It's a wise plan.
Chair Gores, this evening, I think it was at 6:30, many of our kindergarteners had an opportunity to ride the bus for the first time, so we do, we do provide two sessions prior to the start of school year for kindergarten families to just go to their bus stop, ride the bus, and just kind of get used to what it's like to get on and off a bus.
Excellent. So we're up to our discussion items, and first up for that is the summer curriculum And this is Patrick Duffy, the Director of Curriculum and Instruction, and then you can both introduce who's with you.
All right. Good evening, Superintendent Ossai, Chair Gores, and members of the board. It is my pleasure tonight to share with you an update on our new curriculum and program review process. As I shared last year, three departments, World Language and Culture, Gifted and Talented, and Math, began their work to engage in a three-year review of their curriculum, instruction, and collaborative practices. Over 90 staff members engaged in consulting team workshops last spring to begin Phase One of the review. From these consulting teams, 14 staff members were selected to lead curriculum design teams who are charged with guiding all of their colleagues through the review process. As pioneers of this new process, these leaders have been living our mission by putting children first in their planning and energizing and enhancing the spirit of each other as they plan and learn together this, this year. To give you a sampling of the work that is happening now, tonight I have invited a member of the math design team, Illes Saxena, to join us and share with you what their work has entailed and where it will be going.
Thank you. Okay, all right. I'm Illes Saxena. I'm one of five members, or I guess there are four other members of the math design team. We have two elementary people, Jill Mettle and myself are the elementary folks. We have two middle school people, Maddie Wegleitner and Efe Mensa Brown, and we have one high school representative. And like Dr. Duffy said, we are the smaller group that's helping to guide the work, and there's also a larger group that we will work with together called the consulting team. So our work is really to transform math for our students here in St. Louis Park and, and not kind of do what we've done before, because we know when we do what we've done before, we'll just get the similar results that, that we've had in the past, and we want something different, and we want something better, I think, for, for all of our students here. So that's kind of why we're doing this work, and I have been here for kind of a while in St. Louis Park, and I know that I've been part of other curriculum review processes before. And before, it used to be like this. You get together with a group of people, everybody would be, you know, different grades, different ages, different, you know, what levels of the content area, and the task would be this. There are three different curricular options. Choose one, and we move forward, and that's it. And so we're going really in a much deeper direction than that, and I think the work that we're doing really will transform the learning of our students here. We decided to start as a small group by grounding ourselves in a racial equity purpose. This comes from work that we did as staff members back during the school year. Every department or grade level needed to create a racial equity purpose, and we five needed to ground ourselves in that work. And so we looked at secondary's racial equity purpose, which you can see there, and decided that's going to work for us, and that's going to be the guide that we, that we use to move ourselves forward. This is, this is the work that we want to do. We decided that we were going to learn more. We're excited to, to learn about what is happening in mathematics, what are people talking about. And so we are reading several, I think all of us are reading, trying to all catch up to each other and read all the same books, but I'm halfway through this book. I know some of my design team members are all the way done. One of them has even taken an online course from Joe Bowler, and it's, it's, it's about reframing our mindset to think about what could be for our students, not about what it used to be, which was, let's work on Unit 8 and work on whatever the skill set is in Unit 8 and be done with that and then move to Unit 9. This is kind of a different direction and, and a very promising one. Here's what Joe Bowler has to say. She says, "Although people are born with brain differences, such differences are eclipsed by the experiences people have during their lives, and we think as a design team that we would like to shape those experiences so every student can succeed at very high levels and be engaged and involved and integrated with their math work." We're also reading this book, Becoming the Math Teacher You Wish You'd Had, and I don't know, it's very tiny print, but if you can see some of those chapter titles, it's, you know, mathematicians make mistakes, mathematicians take risks, mathematicians work together and alone, and these are the kinds of things that we would like to look for when we articulate what our hopes are for math in St. Louis Park, and we want to bring this work to our consulting team in the fall. So our next steps, we decided we needed to get a little bit more information, so we're going to give a survey. We're hoping to go to every elementary school and talk with the staff. All the elementary principals have agreed to have us come in for about 15 minutes, and we'll give people a survey to find out where teachers are at in terms of teaching mathematics and what they need from us and the larger consulting group. We're going to meet with the consulting team again in the fall. We have already collaborated with the GT program review people, the design team for that, and we're going to continue that because math and the GT group need to get together and, and not be the same, but our work will complement each other. And of course, we'll keep principals in the loop about where we're going along the way, but this just gives you a little, I don't know, a glimpse of what we, what we've been up to. It's been exciting work. It's, it's been fun to do. It hasn't seemed like I need to give up my summer to do this. I want to do this, and all of us on the design team really want to make some long-lasting changes for math that will benefit all of our students here in St. Louis Park. Thank you.
Is there anything that you saw in the data advance or in the data in general that's pointing you in certain directions already?
That's a really good question. I think just today we had a meeting, and one of our middle school design team members brought up some of that data, and we just kind of looked at it and thought, you know, we, the data that we were looking at was not showing a great result. It was looking at, we were looking at something that was showing a decrease in many of the levels of schooling. And so that's just a small glimpse of why we would just, would push ourselves in a different direction. I'm sure we will look more at the data as it comes out. I know it's embargoed right now, but we'll look at it more as, as, as we get into it. It was just last, was it only last week that we had our data advance and we had kind of a first cursory view of, of the data, but it's telling that, that we need to make some, see what we can do to make it better for everyone.
So we've been, we've been struggling in the math curriculum, right, for a while as far as the scores come out, and this, what you're doing is fantastic. We're changing the way that math is being done, essentially, correct?
Yep.
And I'm wondering, I always like to move fast, so it seems like this is going to be, what, a year, year and a half?
I think, I think you're going to be, I think we're, we're moving, but obviously, you know, it's, it's not been one year that we've gotten ourselves to the place where we are. It's going to take longer than one year to get us to a completely different place.
Yeah.
Are we starting? Are we moving? Yeah, I think so.
Which is different from, as you alluded to, you've done these before, but then it was, you have three books, pick one.
Yeah.
Right? Now, now you're talking about changing, changing the way that we deliver that curriculum. So, so you're going to be changing mindsets, you're going to be changing behaviors as far as teachers and then things in the classroom. So I suspect that it's going to take a few years to actually embrace the new that you bring to them, but what, probably a year and a half to bring something to the teachers?
Right. So, so I think, you know, when we think about curriculum, I don't think that we're changing curriculum at the middle school level, right? I think that we are looking at ways to continue to utilize that curriculum at middle school and create more open tasks and look at what they have. They're happy with what they have. How can they, how can they change what they're doing with that and make it, make it deeper and long-lasting for students and cause students to become math and long-lasting for students and cause students to become mathematically curious and develop mathematical reasoning and things like that and keep, and keep going with that. Elementary, a little bit different story, we're probably going to end up getting something different. Do we know what that is? No. We need our consulting team to help us figure that out. You know, we'd like to get our heads on straight, I think, as a design team, our heads on straight in why we're doing this work and the importance and the deep meaning underneath what's happening. And then the curricular choice is going to be kind of the final touch, right? So.
Agree, and I appreciate, I applaud you guys in what you're doing.
Thank you.
And it's a long journey.
Yes.
Much like equities, a long journey.
It is.
But we have to start and make steps, and we'll progress.
Thank you.
Well, I'll just start by echoing Ken. I think what you're doing is fantastic. And I also just like to thank you. I've been teaching mathematics at Norman Hill, and now you've given me a couple really great books I haven't.
Oh, yeah, I could give you lots more. We all could, we could all give you lots more. Thank you very much.
I just, let me, let me just.
Oh, sorry.
So I just wanted, thank you so much, and I appreciated, you know, sort of the concrete thing of middle school curriculums, okay, it's how we're doing it, and we're going to look, you know, there is a curriculum piece to it, but it's more than that.
Yes.
And it may be a teaching skill piece, it may be an attitude piece, teachers and students and families, this is where I'm really going, families. And you can tell me if I'm wrong in the assumptions I'm making, but it's kind of like, why does math, why does it matter that I learn math? What does it have to do with the real world? I, you know, and to me, if I, I'm guessing that's part of the problem in reaching students, they don't think it matters perhaps.
Sure.
So I'm just wondering, as you go through this deep dive that you're doing, if there's going to be a piece about engaging parents and guardians about how math is really not so scary and how the experience is different and how, you know, it's important for the... So the subtle message the kids I've got at home is, yeah, math is not for me, right?
Right.
So how do we get everybody on board that says that math is for everybody?
And math is more than just finding one answer.
Yep.
Yeah. So, yeah, I think, in fact, I mentioned that we met today, that was a small group that met, and the middle school representative that was there was talking about, maybe we can add some math nights and things like that to help to kind of just share that sort of, math is all around us, and we're developing mathematicians here, not just kids that can finish the workbook and be done, so.
And I think that piggyback on something that has been happening at the elementaries, the family math night events, and they're a lot of fun, and I loved that some of our high school students, including your son, came to teach kids how to play chess, was Rakesha's task, but we had all sorts of different stations to go to that were games related to counting or strategy or inference, and it wasn't sitting down and calculating, it was fun and all the energy in the room with the parents and the kids together. So that model, I think we can extend in some other directions as well, so, and thank you to having Rakesha there that night because we play chess several times a week at our house now.
Great, I love to hear that. Thank you, Ken. Thank you.
Anybody else? Right, thank you so much for all the work you're doing for our kids.
You're very welcome.
Thank you.
So next up on our agenda is the construction update from Tom Bravo.
Thank you. Chair Gores, Superintendent Osai, School Board members, I want to give an update of construction. Been very busy this summer. Actually, we started in April, and we do have a kind of a tape for you, too, to show you what's going on, but here we go. The purpose of this, of course, presentation provides an update of the School Board regarding construction for this year. One of the things that I think hopefully everybody's going to be excited about, and the people that have gone into the areas of construction, is that, you know, when people go into classrooms in the past, they would say, yeah, I went to this, I was in this school, and I went to this classroom, and it still looks the same. They're not going to see that anymore. I mean, it's going to be different, it's going to be a way of teaching, it's going to be a way to help the teachers out in the curriculum that they're going to be teaching and how the students are going to learn. So it's going to be very exciting that what you're going to see as the end of this summer ends and school starts. So I'd like to kind of share with you where we are to date. High school locker room, we were, you know, the goal is, again, for all these, is to get a certificate of occupancy. And one of the things that a lot of school districts kind of look at is certificate occupancy means school starting. What we want to do is, we want to get the certificate occupancy before school starts so that, because there are punch list items, there are things that we need to do miscellaneous stuff. So this is, this is what our, right now, current data is that the locker room fell behind a couple days. We knew that there were some issues going on with shutdowns and things like that, but we're happy to see, to tell you that we're, they're moving along. They worked this weekend, they worked Saturday and Sunday at no cost to the district because they know that deadlines need to be met, they know that, you know, we have to be prepared for the teachers to come in, they know that we have to be prepared for the students to come back. So the locker room itself, we're looking at certificate of occupancy this week, we're looking at certificate of occupancy for the offices that the principal's going to be moving down to, the counters, where the brand-new grand entrance is going to be for the bus drop-off. They're going to be linked, believe it or not, it's hard to kind of imagine it, but linked between that and where the main entrance is supposed to be, up in a circle, you're going to see that. And so we're excited about that part of it. Along with that, when you go and see those areas, you're going to see, again, a different way of offices, even for the adults that are here teaching, because it's going to have ergonomic-type furniture, it's going to have more light, more daylight, more openness, things like that, so that people feel more comfortable in the environment that they're going to be, you know, working in. In the middle school, the area that we want to look for certificate of occupancy, of course, is the nurse's office, the science classrooms, and of course, the temporary media center. Today, the cabin trees were delivered to the temporary media center until the new ones completed in January. It's not as big, of course, but it's going to be set up such a way so that we don't lose a lot of the ability for kids to get, go to a media center and get what they need to get. And of course, the new nurse's office, because that's where the new temporary entrance is going to be when we start building the performing arts addition, the offices there, and the kitchen. And then finally, Aquila and Park Spanish Immersion. Aquila, that was probably the biggest one. As you can see, we actually gutted out all of Aquila. Yeah, there's no doubts about that, that we took the kitchen and conformed it to a state-of-the-art kitchen for scratch from cooking in the future. When the new kitchen is built at the high school and the middle school, it's going to be prepared just right so that we can transfer some of the food over there and actually start doing some scratch from cooking over in that area when that, when we're ready. So we're looking at certificate of occupancy around the 23rd, and Park Spanish Immersion, right now, we are, we're looking at, again, certificate of occupancy on the 19th, but a lot of the furniture's already been installed in that area. We're going to be doing a tour, again, I think Wednesday night, on the 15th, I think that's a Thursday night, the teachers are actually going to go and do a tour of the site, they get excited about it. They all want to get into their classrooms. I mean, they're excited, they, not only at PSI but Aquila, they keep on asking, when can we get into our classes? We're trying to get it done as fast as we can because we understand that teachers want to get in there, get their stuff ready, get things going, and they're excited about what they're seeing and so forth. So we're going to see a brand-new furniture in all these areas, you're going to see a different way of how the classroom's laid out, and I hope that you're excited, we're excited about it. So that's what our plan is for the rest of this summer. So given that, this is what we're proposing for a construction timeline, unless, do you want to do the film after? Okay, construction timeline. As you can see, if you're looking at it from left to right, on the left are all the projects that we will complete by the end of August, and it's exciting, it's one-third the way done. So we're very, we're very efficient and very fiscal responsible on the referendum money that we receive from the taxpayers. And next year, you can see in the middle, those are projects that are ongoing because those are ones that are going to go until end of January and so forth, and then we're looking at future projects. And one of the proposals that we're making is, because of the fact that this district, buildings are used constantly, I mean, constantly, they're used, they're not just, you know, seven o'clock in the morning and five o'clock at night and the building's closed. There are events going on with community members, there are events going on with, you know, programs and community ed and things like that. So our look is, initially, we were going to shut down the middle school and the high school almost the same time, just because of the fact they're such big projects, that we're now, we're proposing that maybe we want to do one first and then do the other because we really can't shut down both big schools when they're used constantly. As you can see, what Superintendent Osai is saying is, a hundred students came today because of sports starting up. Over the summer, we had, of course, summer school and things like that. So that's our proposal. We're going to meet more on the Facility Core Team Meeting with superintendent and the people that are the stakeholders, and we're going to come back to you with the more refined of the projects that we're actually going to start next year in the middle school and then after that, the high school. And then, of course, then after that, the district office moves back to Central, that'd be a couple years down the road. But early childhood will also be a project that we'll be starting next summer. So with that, any questions before we show you the construction?
As I was looking through my board book today, one of my kids came and sat down and was like, what's that? I said, well, that's the timeline for the construction. He's going to eighth grade, and he said, well, there's a lot of middle school this year, and then as soon as I get to high school, then the high school's going to be under construction. And I said, yep. And so my question is, do we have any, I mean, we've done a lot of communication to adults and staff and parents, but do we have any kind of communication plan for our students who are, especially those ones who are going to be living through quite a bit of construction happening during the school year, in terms of like what to expect and what, you know, how long it's going to take and even kind of like that, why it's worth it, like, why are we doing this? It's going to be worth it, it's going to be worth it in the long run. We understand that it's an inconvenience and everything at the moment. I don't know if we have any real communication.
I think Sarah, you probably could answer it better than I can on that communication part of it.
So what we've done so far is, we've done a lot of communication through the Superintendent Students Advisory Council, and so we've used that as kind of our communication tool to reach students both at the middle school and the high school levels. And what you'll see in the coming year, because that's, as you've mentioned, in the communications plan and in the timeline, that's really where the work is now going to shift. We'll be doing a lot more focused communication through iTime at the middle school, through homerooms at the high school, really using announcements, using the school newspaper at the high school to really talk about what's happening, how it's going to work. And what Tom has talked about early on in the project and will be talking more about is, we'll be doing lots of plexiglass panels, kind of show and telling the construction as well as it's being done inside the school, so that students can see what's happening, kind of watch it being constructed as it goes on. And so we'll be doing that as it goes on, as well as doing a lot of communications to parents and families, but also going, starting with the students to explain, you know, this is happening, you can't go down the B hallway today, you have to go around this way, as well as, you know, basic things like, things like school lunch are going to have to change and going to look a little different. Parking's going to change, it's going to look a little different in terms of drop-off and pickup every day for school, perhaps where the buses are going to drop off is going to have to change. So there's going to be a lot of communication, it's going to be some heavy lifting over the next two-plus years.
But one of the things I think they're going to see also, and I think Sarah's doing a fantastic part, is they're going to see is, as the media center, let's talk about like the junior eye, we have seven new classrooms that will be done by the end of January. They're going to actually see next-century-type classrooms, which are going to be exciting and the length of the hallway, so they don't have to go all the way around both sides. Yeah, I think they're going to get excited about that.
So Sarah alluded to it. We had talked about it at a, I can't remember the meeting that we're at, but anyway, that's in regards to being able to have kids come in and see some of the construction being done and be educated in that. So like, we have some construction classes that we're doing now where kids get to learn how to build things and, you know, build walls and play plumbing and so on and so forth. The idea was to be able to go inside of the constructions that we're having and then also see it firsthand, right? So it sounds like we're going to have some plexiglass, but I'm looking at the schedule, and it looks like the high school is in 2021?
Yeah, that's our proposal, that we would do it not next year, summer, but the following summer, which is 2021, yes.
Okay. So then they wouldn't have that opportunity in 2020 to, for the high school kids, because that's where that program's at, for the high school kids to see that going on unless they do a field trip over to the middle school, but they would be able to see it in 2021? Or is that just in the summer, or is they going to do it through the whole year?
Well, when we do, that's why we looked at it, because they're not a three-month project. All these projects that we're going to be talking about in the last third of the section is, they're eight-to-12 months projects, so they're going to last pretty long and so forth. I think, you know, the question was asked of me, too, would I ever come in and speak to students about construction? And I told them, yeah, I would be happy to when they get to that point. So I think we would want to see where we're at next fall, the next spring, and then we'll go from there with how it could, how teaching and education could be part of the construction that's going on at the middle school as well as the future high school.
I think it would be a huge benefit to our students if we could work something out like that, because talking about it in the books and then having a designed area inside of your classroom to do things is completely different.
Oh, yeah, I agree. I mean, I went through that when I was in, a hundred years ago, and it's, it's...
Nine years ago, I went through it, too, and it was a great experience for me, so.
It is, yes.
I think it's really wise to be looking at our capacity to manage projects and whether we, so that we don't take on more than we can handle. I think that's really wise. I thought Ann's hint at this question was, are we going to, and I would just invite you to noodle on this, does the order that's being proposed unfairly impact a particular class of students so that they're going to be in school in the constructions zone for too much of their career with us, or will it not? And I just, you know, I don't know what the impact is on the students in school and the construction projects that are happening, but I just think it's something to worth thinking about.
Okay.
And if I can just add, Chair Gores, I think that's certainly a consideration and an important part as we're thinking about this, but as we've been looking at the timeline, kind of the main focus thus far has really been thinking about how are we as efficient as possible with the resources that have been given to us. So when you, some of the proposal, what you'll notice is that as we've laid everything out, the proposal is set up in a way that allows us to be as efficient as possible with the resources, recognizing that currently the materials and labor is pretty volatile with just the number of projects occurring and then some of the tariffs and other things. So we're really looking for efficiency to make sure we can maximize the $100.9 million.
The other questions. I think we'd like to share with you the progress. This was filmed two weeks ago, so it's changed quite a bit, but I think, yeah.
I'm going to try this again, we're having some sound issues, so. We're going to try it one more time, and you know, it's just kind of that old saying, it's never the technology's fault, it's usually the human error operator, and I clearly continue to do things I'm not supposed to do, so I promise you it will work this time because I'm going to step back after I press play.
In order to access it, you just have to go to our homepage, and at the top of our homepage, under News and Announcements, is the Summer 2019 Facilities Update information, and there you can find not only this video, but a lot of other information connected to our facilities work. So, thank you, and that concludes the construction update.
Thank you very much, and I always want to say thank you to your good work, and I want to say thank you to the community for giving us the money to do this work on behalf of our students.
So I'll just stay up here, if that's okay, Chair Gores, members of the board. This evening, I would like to just take a few minutes, and my hope is to engage in a conversation with you all. If you all recall, when was it now? June of 2018, when this policy was passed, you all made a very intentional decision in the policy language to say that we wanted to come back, you know, before the prior, before the upcoming school year, to really engage in a conversation about how is it going? Are there things that we need to look at? Are there things that we need to revise, you know, as we move forward? So my hope this evening, as I'm sharing the information with you, is that we just engage in a conversation. Know that all of the information that I'll be sharing with you this evening is based on my interactions with students, parents, staff, leaders in our organization, right? So, I mean, I would also say based on my own interactions and observations at site. So what you'll, what you'll see here is that there are some things that we've made some progress on, and then there are other things that we still have work to do. And what I, what I've also have done here is kind of outlined a plan of next steps, recognizing that that is open to input and feedback from you all and other members of our community. And, you know, if necessary, we can revise as we move forward to really meet the needs of all of our learners here in St. Louis Park. So I hope that you all are okay with that, and if we, if we can just engage in a conversation, please feel free to interrupt, ask questions, however you feel necessary. Does that work for you all this evening? Okay, great. So, and I talked a little bit about this, but the purpose is to just really provide an update to the school board regarding implementation of the gender inclusion policy. And with our policy, under, specifically under the general statement of the policy, there's, there's kind of key language that I took out of that. The key language that talks about staff and systems in our organization will be designed to create inclusive access to programs and facilities for all of our students. And here on this, on this visual, you'll see kind of gender inclusion in the center, and all around that are six of the seven components that we outline in our gender inclusion policy. The one component that I left off of this diagram is the component that speaks directly to the work that you all have been doing and will continue to do as a board to make sure that our policies and our policy language aligns with the gender inclusion policy. So what I'm going to now spend the rest of my time with you all is really engaging in a conversation about each of these seven areas, and some of the feedback I've heard, some of the observations I've made, some areas where I feel like we're making progress, some areas where I think, you know, we still have a lot of work to do. And my hope is that, I'm confident, as I know I've spoken to several of you over the course of the school year, that there are things that you've heard as well, that you have questions about, and my hope is that we can just engage in a conversation about that this evening. But, you know, as we, and so I use, as, I use two columns here. One, I use the term implemented, and then the other one, in progress. I really went back and forth about that, because the word implemented seems so final. It's like, oh, you've implemented, and now it's great. And the thing, one of the things that I understand and that a place that I operate from is this, this continuous improvement process. So even though something might be listed in the implemented category, I fully recognize that there's always an opportunity to get better. So what I, what I hope you don't hear me saying this evening is that if something's in implemented, that means we're never going to look at it, it's going well, and we're just moving on. What that really means is that I think we're in a, we're in a pretty good place with it, and that we recognize that we can continue to get better as we continue to learn more. You know, I always say that as I, as we as an organization increase our consciousness, that convictions and commitments that we make become stronger, and it's kind of this cyclical process where we increase our consciousness, our convictions and commitments, and we continue to grow, right? So I want to preface that, because I don't want you to see something up there and say, "Well, how, how, what do you mean?", because I just heard this the other day, right? But as, as we think about some of the things under the implemented column, you know, I, I believe that as it relates to safety and privacy of all students, specifically related to Policy 515, that we've, we've done a good job here in St. Louis Park, really keeping student information safe. When students come and share information with staff members, or social workers, or counselors, or administrators, that information isn't shared in a manner that would be later used to create a bullying situation, right? So I, I feel that we're along, along the road of doing a great job there, and certainly it's important and critical that we continue to be vigilant of our practice in that area and making sure that we're, we're protecting students. But as I, as I have opportunities to meet with students at our GSA at our middle school, at our GSA at our high school, overall, the students express a great deal of gratitude for the St. Louis Park Public School District, and overall, they, they express a sense of safety and feeling as if the school district is taking the necessary steps to create a welcoming environment for them. Earlier this evening, as part of our special meeting, we talked a little, we were required, based on the new Minnesota State High School League guidelines, to watch a video, and one of the pieces that, as, as a relation to Minnesota State High School League, they have very specific language around ensuring that students are able to participate in co-curricular and extracurricular activities. And I'm proud to say that, you know, up until this point, we've not had issues with students having access to extracurricular or co-curricular activities that they're interested in. And I'm confident that as long as we continue to adhere to the Minnesota State High School League's expectations and are always mindful of our mission and the policy that we have in place that will continue to be a welcoming environment for students in co-curricular and extracurricular activities. One of the things that, and I'll say this, recognizing that oftentimes conversations around gender inclusion are kind of made to be conversations about facilities or restrooms, right? You know, it's like, if we're talking about gender inclusion, we're talking about bathrooms, and it's much more than that, but recognizing in our policy, we wanted to create inclusion and access to students. And in St. Louis Park Public Schools, students have been, they've, they've received access to facilities that align with their gender identity. And with that, there's a whole spectrum of students, right? So there are some students that aren't as comfortable, right, in using facilities that align with their gender identity, and at each of our facilities, we are really working to increase the number of what we consider to be gender-neutral restrooms, so that, you know, students who may not feel as comfortable, you know, utilizing a restroom that aligns with their gender identity have access to use restrooms. And then the last piece there that I've identified under, you know, implemented, recognizing that that still means we're continuing to learn, is this respect of all students' gender identity and gender expression. That is something that, you know, really aligns to our core values here in St. Louis Park. You know, we believe that every student has equal intrinsic value and worth, and that shows up in how we've implemented this policy. So what I, what I'm going to do is just pause for a second and, and just give you an opportunity to ask questions about anything I've, anything I've shared so far, or anything you've heard, or, you know, an area that you may want to go deeper.
Ashton, thank you so much for this review. I really appreciate it, and what, what I'm excited about is we have a definite willingness to engage in student voice to listen. And my fifth grader was on a group that had a meeting with the principal and social worker to talk about their observed concerns related to gender inclusion, and it was done very respectfully and very supportively so that that student voice could be heard and elevated. And so, and that's why I think the importance of having the policy in place, it lets people know we are going to listen and we are going to take action. So I really want to compliment the staff at the school for being accessible to the students.
Thank you for that.
And Ashton, I just wanted to comment on the part on the implemented side. I appreciate your caveats about that, and how you hear that, I really do. But about the facilities, and not only do our facilities that we're working on provide for gender inclusion, but that benefits all students--
Absolutely.
--who have an interest in privacy.
Yeah.
And when you talk about gender neutral, that's part of that, when you talk about some of the new locker room designs and privacy showers, that's going to benefit all of our students--
Absolutely.
--including our students that may not identify in a binary way in terms of gender.
Yeah, I really appreciate you saying that, because similar to my, you know, statement earlier about sometimes this has been made into a conversation about, you know, bathrooms, it also has been made into this conversation that it's only to, it only benefits this, you know, group of students. And to your point, it benefits all students, and it creates a safe environment for all students in addition to some of the gender-neutral restrooms that we're working on. We're also, as we do this locker room project here at the high school that Mr. Bravo just talked about, in that locker room project, you know, because this benefits all students, we've developed single-stall showers, right? So regardless of your, your gender expression identity, you know, a single-stall shower, from a developmentally standpoint, is something that's comfortable to, to students this age. So thank you for bringing that piece up. So as, as we shift over to the right-hand, right side of this, you know, there's some things that I've identified as in progress, and again, you know, I would say as we think about professional development, we've, we've conducted quite a bit of professional development, and we have more coming up, but in my mind, until every single staff member with all confidence can say, like, "I know what to do, I know how to meet the needs of all of my students, regardless of their gender identity or expression," I feel like that's kind of an in-progress piece. So, so know that there, just because it's in the in-progress section doesn't mean that we've done nothing, it just means that we're not there yet, you know? So in many respects, I could have probably put this whole thing in, in progress. But as it relates to, with academic programming, I, you know, I've had some conversations at the secondary level, specifically around some of our FIAD courses. Here at the high school, there was a FIAD course that we were offering that traditionally was accessed by female students, you know, and I was working, I've been working with the administration here to make sure that, to be in compliance with this, that we're not doing so unless, right, it has that legitimate, you know, it's being used or serving as a legitimate pedagogical tool. So I, I believe that we're going to need to spend more time on really unpacking each course, each lesson, and I know that we've not completely done that work yet, so we still have a lot more work to do. And one of the pieces, as we're going through these different curriculum and program review cycles, is that we need, you know, we're going to take time within those cycles to really reflect on what it is that we've been doing, and not only how that is in compliance with this policy, but, but all of our policies for that matter. And one of the pieces that I identified as being in progress is connected to students' preferred names and pronouns, and I put it here not because it's not happening, because I would say the thing that maybe is happening the most out of all of this is that our staff are very intentional and have created systems to ensure that they know how their students, you know, prefer to be called. But the reason that I put it here is because from a technology standpoint, we're still working on trying to figure out what we need to do through Power School and our other information systems to make sure that if a substitute teacher comes in the classroom and pulls up a roster, that, you know, that student's preferred name is listed there. So we're in progress because of that. But I personally believe from a, just from a teacher's standpoint and a staff member's standpoint, that this is probably some of the best work that they're doing, and that just gets back to the fact that our teachers and our staff are really working hard to build relationships and get to know our students. I spoke a little bit about professional development. You know, we started off the year last year with Joel Baum from Gender Spectrum, who provided an all-staff, he was part of our all-staff back-to-school kickoff. And then we spent time in December, and then our other profession, I think it was December, we didn't do anything in March, but in December, we spent more time going deeper in the area of, of gender inclusion. On August 27th, at our all-back-to-school kickoff, we're going to spend more time providing staff. The piece that I, I feel like I have to do a better job of this year and be more strategic about is making sure that I'm spending dedicated time at each site, with each building leader and each staff, really unpacking this, because what I've learned over this school year, as I've gotten feedback from leaders, is that developmentally, it's different at each level. And I would say maybe the, the place where we'll have the, we'll have to be really intentional and strategic about how we do it is the middle school, for whatever reason, just from a developmental standpoint, that there, I've noticed that some of the, the majority of the questions come up from the middle school around implementation, and I just think it's more about the age of the students and some of the different things that they're dealing with at that age. And we're going to, you know, I have to do a better job this year of really spending the dedicated time there and addressing the questions of staff and really working to, to meet the needs. But one of the pieces that I should have referenced related to the identity and preferred names, one of the pieces that we've not done yet is our forms, you know? So even to this point, we have forms, right, that only, they're binary in nature, they're male, they're female, so there's a lot of work that we'll be doing, and I'm wondering as we move to more of an automated enrollment system and start to streamline all of our forms, you know, I just believe we need to look at our forms anyways, because we, we ask family members to fill out their name 20 times, right, to register school. So we have to really figure out how we streamline that, not only from an inclusiveness standpoint, but just from a customer service standpoint. So my, my hope and belief is that as we're starting to do that work more intentionally, that we're going to be able to update that as well, because that's a place that we're lagging as it relates to the implementation of this policy. And then the last piece that I just believe is still in progress is, you know, as we've done a tremendous job over the, I think last year, we, we reviewed and updated and revised close to 40 policies, right? So you all have been working extremely hard around policy, but we, as you'll see on our policy development timeline, we still have a lot of policies that we still have to touch. So that's why that piece is in progress. So I'll stop here for questions, and then I'll just talk a little bit about next steps, and we can go from there.
I appreciate everything that's been done, and I think everything's headed in the right direction. I just wondered particularly about the part about in-progress, about identifying and addressing students by their preferred name. I've heard one problem about that is that it cannot be done centrally, like, it's up to each individual teacher to modify their lists, and then maybe the substitute teacher will see, accidentally see the, you know, birth name. So the one problem is the data systems don't really support this very well. And the other thing I have heard, perhaps there are at least a couple of teachers who have been somewhat resistant to doing this. So it's also just a question about policy. Are teachers required to do this, or--
So Director Beneky, thank you for your, your questions, and I, I appreciate you providing more context around the pronouns, because I would agree that preferred names and pronouns is something, as we're looking at our data, our information systems, that we have to figure out a way where that can be included in the Power School. And I, I think there's a pathway, we're moving along that, that process is just about implementation and making sure that everyone knows how to do it, to where it doesn't disrupt or impact the data that we report to the state. So I appreciate that, because I've heard that as well, and I know that's something that we're working towards. And then your second piece, can you remind me of the, the second question that you just had?
The policy, am I, are--
Yes.
--teachers required to use a preferred name?
You know, simply put, yes, right?
Oh, in our policy, maybe it's--
As simply as I can state it is that, yes. Teachers, all staff for that matter, are expected to adhere to every single board policy that we, that we have. So, so to your point, if you're hearing that that is not occurring, then that's, that is dependent upon me and site leadership or department leadership to make sure that we're reminding staff of expectations of being an employee here in St. Louis Park and supporting them and making sure that they're able to meet those expectations. Okay, so just from a next step standpoint, and I intentionally just, I chose, this could have been a lot longer, but I just chose a few pieces that I'm seeing that, you know, we're going to have to address. So Director Benneke, thank you for your questions and I appreciate you providing more context around the pronouns because I would agree to prefer names and pronouns as something as we're looking at our data, our information systems, that we have to figure out a way where that can be included in the Power School. And I, I think there's a pathway. We're moving along that, that process is just about implementation and making sure that everyone knows how to do it to where it doesn't disrupt or impact the data that we report to the state. So I appreciate that because I've heard that as well and I know that's something that we're working towards. And then your second piece, can you remind me of the second question that you just had?
The policy, are teachers required to use a preferred name?
You know, simply put, yes, right?
Oh, the policy, maybe.
As simply as I can state it is that yes, teachers, all staff for that matter, are expected to adhere to every single board policy that we, that we have. So to your point, if you're hearing that that is not occurring, then that's, that is dependent upon me and site leadership or department leadership to make sure that we're reminding staff of expectations of being an employee here in St. Louis Park and supporting them and making sure that they're able to meet those expectations. Okay, so just from a next step standpoint, and I intentionally just, I chose, this could have been a lot longer, but I just chose a few pieces that I'm seeing that, you know, we're going to have to address here relatively soon is, and one is this around the continued professional development for all staff. And I could have continued that sentence by specifically making sure that we're out at sites and going deeper and being responsive to the needs and questions of teachers and staff and administrators at our sites and in our, our different facilities. And then the second piece, which kind of gets to what you were describing, Director Benneke, is around making sure our forms are updated and our information systems, more importantly, are able to accommodate the students' preferred names and pronouns. And we're going to continue to review curriculum and programs to ensure that students are not separated based upon gender unless it serves as a legitimate pedagogical tool. And then, you know, lastly, we'll continue to look at our policy language and making sure that we're updating it. And it's going to be my goal that when I stand here before you next year, providing you an update, that these four items, or at least the majority of those items, we have a plan for and we're further along in implementation. So that concludes my presentation for this evening.
I had one question about the systems because I thought in the earlier of developing of this program, if we put it into the system, then all teachers would see it as that name, right? And that student may not want to be referred to as that name in certain classes. Has that gone away or how would that be managed?
I think the, so certainly it's a very fluid process and what you described is certainly a situation that could potentially come up, which is why we're really trying to be intentional in the process that we develop. You know, so far, the direction that we're heading is, it's almost, is we're leading towards this process in which students will complete some sort of form, you know, with a support group of staff and then that staff person or persons will help to make sure that the information system is updated. So that student would know that, hey, if I complete this form with my parent or guardian's permission, that it's going to be, it's going to show up everywhere. So the student is making a conscious decision. So there, again, there's still some work that we need to do in this area and we've, you know, the great thing is, is that we're not the first school district out the gate here, you know, St. Paul and Minneapolis have some really robust processes that we've been looking at and trying to figure out how we can learn from them, things that have gone well, things that haven't gone well so that we don't, you know, duplicate the same mistakes.
Question about professional development. I was at the professional development day when Joel Baum was there and it was, it was just an amazing learning opportunity, I think, and I think just a really educational and also positive and kind of affirming way of learning about, about sort of the, what gender identity is and what gender expression is so that staff could really understand that. And I think people felt very, the people who were around me that day felt very positive about it. And I was wondering if there's been any opportunity for specific types of staff who are in, who are more likely to, I guess, kind of need this at professional development? So counselors, social workers, health teachers, PE, that kind of group, is there, has there been anything like that in sort of smaller, more targeted groups?
Yeah, so thank you for your question, Director Casey. And my response to that would be not in a systemic manner, which is why I believe our professional development is still in process. So certainly there's been opportunities for learn, to learn, but we don't have, it's not been done so in a strategic manner where we're saying like, you know, this group, you go this time, this group you go this time, and we're cycling through, making sure that anybody new in that employee group would receive training. One of the intentional decisions that we're making heading into August 27th is that last year we had Joel Baum, which, who he did a tremendous job providing a high-level understanding and overview of what this is and what it isn't. And this year, we're going to go a little bit deeper, so we're inviting Michelle Beerman from St. Paul Public Schools, who is going to really help us look at what does this look like, what did it look like for us, you know, and what does it look like from a school level on a day-to-day basis? So, but, but as we continue to move forward this school year, we're going to have to really create those systems to ensure that, you know, particularly like even people, I view it being extremely important for even our clerical staff, right? You know, some of the first people to greet families and students as they come into our building, so we have to create those systems still.
Aston, thank you.
Thank you.
It was really a very excellent and helpful report on that first year of implementation, you know, of the policy. And we'd had, we'd had practices in place before we adopted the policy, but now we're being more systemic and intentional about the policy. And so I appreciate all the good work you and the staff have done over the, over this last year and look forward to hearing the good work we're going to do in the coming year because it's, it's an evolution.
Absolutely. Thank you.
And the other thing I just want to do is we're talking about this, about our gender inclusion policy because the thought came to me was Michelle Kenny. And I just want to mention Michelle Kenny here at this point in time. She was our attorney for many years, served us really well and was helpful in our review and vision of and adoption of the gender inclusion policy. Michelle died not too long after we adopted this policy from an unexpected and rather quickly progressive cancer. So we just want to, I just want to take a moment to say thank you to her and acknowledge her good work on, on our behalf on this policy. So next up, we have the school board, school liaison assignments. Let me find my note. So what we, what we try to do is have each school board member have one school, that is the liaison that they, it's not their school per se, but it's the school that they are a liaison to because we represent all of our schools and that's an important concept I want to reiterate. But we try to have one school board member as a liaison each school year to a school. And then our chair can change in January and if that changes, then there's a little swamp on that school assignment. So for the coming school year, which starts again September 3rd and September 5th if you're a kindergartner, the school liaison at Aquila is going to be Ken Morrison. The school liaison at Peter Holbar is going to be Jim Benneke. The school liaison at Susan Lindgren is going to be Mary Tombach. The middle school school liaison will be Joe Tatalovich. And at the high school, the school liaison will be Ann Casey from the school board. At PSI, it will be Karen Waters. And the other, the other comment I would make, just from a governance point of view, we expect to have listening sessions in October and then one in January or February and then another one in April. We don't yet have dates or times or places, but we'll update as we go along and get those in place. And the listening session includes two to three board members and the community will come and just have more of a dialogue. It's called a listening session, it's more of a dialogue and that's that opportunity. All right, next up is the policy development, first reading policy 536, gender inclusion, 410, family and medical leave, and 413, harassment and violence. These are policies that we have, but we're just reviewing them on a first reading review right now.
Chair Goris, members of the board, would you like to take these policies individually or summarize them as a whole?
Why don't you do more at a time?
So 536, gender inclusion, I just spent some time sharing a little information with you regarding the implementation of that policy. At this time, from a staff standpoint, there are, there are no recommendations for modifications to that policy, but certainly are open to input and feedback based on what you've heard over the course of the school year.
Any comments?
So the superintendent alluded to this by saying, when we take a look at this next year, so this is, this is on an annual and I think that is appropriate. I just wanted to clarify that it is until it's not, is that correct?
Yeah, it said, yeah, it says annually until June 2021.
Okay.
So that could be changed if we want to change it, but probably don't need to make that decision, well, I don't think we need to make it now, but you can.
Oh, no, I think that's appropriate. Yeah, thank you.
This may be a minor thing, but I was kind of going over this policy with somebody who had an interest. They thought our definition of transgender perhaps wasn't quite the best one. A lot of groups specifically say that transgender should just refer to gender identity, not gender expression, but there is some different uses of it, you know, even in the LGBTQ plus community, but, and since there is disagreement, maybe we just leave it for right now, maybe it's just something to think about before we do the second reading.
So I, Jim's referring to Roman numerals III-E, transgender is an umbrella term describing persons whose gender identity or expression is different from that traditionally associated with sex at birth. I do think the word "or" is helpful to us and what's important for the community to understand is as this policy was created with a lot of intentional input and dialogue with different community members and stakeholders, we knew that we were going to have to look at every item in the policy. That's why we put an annual reading on it through June 2021. So as we get more information from different stakeholders, if we do need to make a change, we've got a mechanism in place to do that. In this case, I do think it is helpful that the word "or" kind of covers both because it is an umbrella term at this point for the general parlance.
I think, I think just some groups want specifically transgender to mean sort of the internal struggle, internal struggle that your gender you think you are is different than the one assigned at birth and they don't want it to refer to just external expression. So it's not the word "or," it's taken out, "or" expression, those two words, maybe. We do get disagreement on that and maybe it's not too important even, maybe no one would be offended this way, but it's just something about this.
So Jim, is this a disagreement that's out there in general or something you're talking about specifically coming from St. Louis Park or high school or?
Well, it originated with this one person, but then I was just taking a sample of websites and some websites you'll actually see specifically say that gender, that transgender only refers to the gender identity but not gender expression. You get to like the Wikipedia definition and it almost completely matches ours, so like there is disagreement out there, but.
I would, Jim, I hear you. I like, I personally like the definition as we have it. I know we looked at several variations of that input from lots of folks when we were drafting, that it's not just the one person you're talking about. And, and I, I think it's good at this stage in our learning process to have a definition that is more inclusive and not less inclusive as we're trying to have it applied to more folks. And I think it's a clear change with Merewit and I don't, I don't feel like we have enough data to do that yet in the evolution that we're going forward on this, in our learning curve here and the input that we have from others.
And I think, I'm just kind of going, trying to go through the policy again really quickly and with that question in mind. And I actually don't see the word transgender being used very much in the policy. The policy is meant to be much more, I think, broad than that so that it's not about specific definitions if this or isn't included. It's supposed to be inclusive, gender inclusive of folks who are defining themselves in various different ways. So I, I hear what you're saying and I definitely, I get that, that piece of the definition can feel exclusive or too inclusive maybe, but that I think for the purposes of our policy, it doesn't change the, it doesn't change the, the goal of the policy or even the practice of the policy. I mean, it really doesn't change our policy at all because we're not saying transgender students get this or not or anything. It's just that, I think we kind of wanted to have some terminology just generally for educational purposes. I think that's why the terminology is there. Again, I just don't see it as being really part, I don't, I don't even see that word being used in the policy anywhere in a sense of way.
What you're saying. I'm not even quite sure what I think, it's just definition can be important and some people place high importance on, so I just thought I'd throw it out there, but.
Just my mic, anybody else have anything on this policy before we move on to the next one? Right, Aston, I think we're up to the next one.
The next policy, policy 410, family and medical leave was last reviewed September of 2018. As you all are aware, this policy is one of the policies that the Minnesota School Board Association recommends that school boards review annually. So we've, we've had a practice of reviewing this policy annually. As this policy was passed after the gender inclusion policy last year, as a school board, as you all reviewed this, you reviewed it with that in mind and looked for language. At this time, there are no additional recommendations from the Minnesota School Board Association around this policy or, and I know Director Cryer was going to add a little bit from a staff standpoint, but.
Chair, superintendent, members of the board, there are about five policies where something happens or is alleged to have happened, then some investigation has to happen and then some actions taken. And I want to try to bring those closer and closer together. So I'm going to, I'd like to have another chance to review this policy and possibly bring, you know, a comment as either on this policy or then as some of the bullying or other ones come forward. The other thing that makes this policy a little awkward in the way it's drafted, it will say if a student, teacher, administrator, or outside vendor, or somebody harasses a student, teacher, administrator, or other personnel. So you really kind of end up with a student-student type situation, which really should be a 513 policy. And so we have, we have things that are convoluted in here because if a student harasses a teacher, is that covered under student discipline or is that covered under the harassment policy? And so sometimes the jurisdictions are a little odd.
Director Cryer, so we were talking about 410, I think you're referencing 413.
Thank you, I have no, I have nothing on 410. Family medical leave is just great, yeah. I'll withhold my, my comments on 410.
That's, that's great, but thank you. You've made your comments for 413, so we're good.
Are you, Aston, are there no recommendations on 413 except that Director Cryer may be bringing something to us and we should stay tuned?
For 413, correct, yeah. And 413, my overview would be the same exact overview of 410. Minnesota School Board Association recommends annual review. The school board reviewed it last year after the reviewing of the gender inclusion policy and in mind, kept that in mind as you were looking at the language of the policy.
And, and I would just say to Director Cryer, we'll look forward to your thoughts in whether they're in policy or whether they're in the procedure part as you, and if we have to put this on for a third reading, that's not the end of the world. All right, so next up, we have our consent agenda. Is there anything on the consent agenda that anybody wants to pull off for discussion? All right, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Moved by Ann, is there a second? Seconded by Karen, all in favor?
Aye.
Carrie, six-oh. Next up, we have our action agenda. First up on the action agenda is the truth and taxation date. It is recommended that the school board approve the date of December 9, 2019 at 6:30 PM. There's a truth and taxation 2019 hearing and we'll have a presentation on that, then I'll ask if there's a motion, so don't let me forget to ask for a motion.
So yeah, this date fits in with the criteria that's set by So yeah, this date fits in with the criteria that's set by the state for the dates and times for the truth and taxation hearing. This action by the board to establish the date isn't required, but we do have a portal now on the Hennepin County website, and I will make sure that this date and time gets inserted there. And then it can go out, it will be on our parcel specific notices that go out after the board sets the preliminary levy in September. And those parcel specific notices go out in November prior to this truth and taxation hearing. So that's what the date is for.
And this is the date, September 9 is a school board meeting night, and we will just have this hearing before our regular school board meeting. And the hearing will be at 6:30. Is there any, is there a motion to approve that date and time for the truth and taxation hearing? Moved by Karen. Is there a second? Seconded by Ken. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie's six oh. Next up, we have the employee agreement, executive assistant to the superintendent and school board. Before we do the motion, do you want to make a presentation?
Chair Goris, members of the board, our new executive assistant to the superintendent and school board is Flora Cortina, who has been with us for approximately a week and one day. Today marks the longest day in that she's been working here. Started early this morning and is here this evening, but has been a tremendous asset to our team since joining last week. Comes to us with a wealth of experience in the healthcare industry as an executive assistant. Assistant, most recently, she served in the capacity of chief of staff for a startup mental health care organization. So we would recommend the employment agreement between the district and Flora.
So it is recommended that the school board approve the employment agreement between independent school district number 283 and the executive assistant to the superintendent and school board. Flora, is it Cortina? For the 2019-2020 school year as presented, is there a motion? Moved by Ann. Is there a second? Seconded by Karen. Is there any discussion besides mine? I have some discussion. I just have to ask one thing. Why, and I think I know the answer, but I'm going to ask it anyway. Why a one-year contract?
So this contract, yeah, so this contract has historically either stood by itself but referenced the contracts for the professional employee group. And so the professional employee group had an 2018 to 2020 contract. And so this one will be a one-year contract until we can get her on, then sync back up with the professional group for two-year contracts.
That's the answer I thought I was going to get. Thank you, Rick. The other thing I want to say is I want to really, we had an interim executive assistant helping us, and that was Julie McBride-Diddy. She did a wonderful job. And I just want to thank her here for the good work that she did for us. The other thing I want to say is Mary Tombach and I, as the vice chair and me as the chair, were invited to sit in on the final interviews that Aston had and with the finalists for this position. And our unanimous recommendation was to hire Flora. And so I'm really delighted, I'm delighted that you applied. I'm delighted that it all went so well. And I'm delighted that I assume after this vote, you're going to be with us. So thank you. Anybody else want to make any comments?
I'll do it quickly. So the punch was good. Thank you. And welcome aboard. It's a challenging role, and I know you'll do well.
And the other comment I'm going to make is I am really delighted that our superintendent now has a really key support person in place to make our lives and his life and the life of our district work so much more smoothly. So we're really, really delighted that we have gotten to this point in the process. So all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carrie's six oh. Communications and transmittals.
I wanted to give a little update on AMSD. We've had our first meeting of the new school year already. And I, Aston and I both sit on the big AMSD board of directors, and Aston's also going to be starting his second year on the legislative committee. So I want to thank him for serving in that very important role. We had a really interesting speaker, and that's why I wanted to do a little update. The speaker was Dr. Susan Brower, who's the state demographer. If you have not heard her speak or seen any of her presentations, it was fascinating. I could not stop thinking about it. And it had two pieces. The first was about the upcoming census in 2020 and specifically talking about some of the challenges. It's predicted to be one of the most challenging census years that we've ever had due to some understandable distrust in the federal government, some survey fatigue, and also a constrained budget for the Census Bureau. So they're kind of getting a bit of a late start on the communications. And in Minnesota specifically, some of the big languages, language groups that we have in Minnesota are not part of the main census language groups because they're not nationally big language groups. So there's going to be language barriers also that are going to be difficult to overcome in Minnesota specifically. But it's also really important, the census. She talked about how $15 billion comes to Minnesota annually for, from the federal government based on census data. So that's including, I counted it up, more than $350 million in Title One, between Title One and special education only. And a lot of other education programs do, but those were two that I, that popped out at me, $350 million just from Minnesota, all based on census data. And that also, I mean, also for our representation, Minnesota was the last state to receive a representative and the last time. So we're going to be on the edge of losing a seat in the US House again this time. So there are some resources available to school districts to educate on the census that I know Aston saw. And I think also, it's just sort of important for us to know, to know how important it is and how the census is trustworthy. It is a totally different thing from all other kinds of things in the federal government. If you've ever done any genealogy, you know that it takes 72 years to become, to be able to access census data. That is still true. So it is safe and it is really, really important for our resources and for our representation. So it's good for us to know and to be able to speak to community members about both of those points. The second piece of her presentation was about sort of general demographic trends in the state. And I think probably mostly have heard about the aging population. She said that by the end of 2019, there will be more older adults in Minnesota than school-aged children. And that shift will be permanent, at least in the foreseeable future. So that's going to have a large effect, what, by the end of 2019. So now. So she said that's going to have a huge, obviously, effect on the workforce. And she said it's going to make a very good time to be an employee. That I thought was an interesting point. And a sort of local interesting thing for us was she pointed to a very large increase in the population in the cities of Minneapolis and St. Paul. Between the 2010 censuses, neither of those cities gained population. I think one lost 30 and the other one was exactly the same. And then between 2010 and now, I think between the two have gained, it was like 65,000 people. And she expects that spillover, it's mostly young people in the cores of both Minneapolis and St. Paul. She expects that spill, to spill over into the suburbs in the near future if it hasn't started already. So that is a bit of good news for our school district, I think. I wanted to share that. So Dr. Brower's presentation and everything that AMSD sees is available for anybody to look at online. So I would encourage all of you to do that. It's amsd.org. Under their meeting materials, you can see all kinds of excellent presentations. So I wanted to share that.
Thank you, Ann. Anybody else? The last date of file to run for a school board seat or a city council seat or for mayor is tomorrow. And we are meeting on August 12th. So if you're watching this on a delayed basis, you have missed it out. But I just wanted to mention that in case. We have 10 folks who have filed as of now. And the last date to withdraw is a day or two after the filing date closes. So filing can be done at the city clerk's office at the city hall. It's going to be an interesting and fun election season. And there's no ranked choice voting, but we have, we'll have, you can vote for up to four people for a school board, and you don't have to make choice. The top four will get elected. September 3rd is the first day of school for everybody but the kindergartners. And we're going to welcome the kindergartners on September 5th. And we are going to, I'm just going to say right now how grateful in advance I am for everybody in this community who greets our kids as they're waiting for the school bus, who drives more safely, who is more welcoming, who just makes the kickoff to the school year and the whole year go so much better for everybody. So thank you in advance. Is there a motion to adjourn? Moved by Ken. Is there a second? Seconded by Ann. All in favor?
Aye.
Carrie's six oh. Enjoy the rest of summer.